We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, June the 3rd, 2025. We have all our council members present and we have a majority of our directors and staff with us this evening. And we welcome the, our public who have joined us and also those people joining us remotely. We'll start tonight's meeting out with a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Rogers, after which we will have an opening remarks by Councilmember Williams.
Please repeat the pledge with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we come before thee this day at our Pleasant Grove City Council meeting, we thank thee, Father, for the blessings that we have of living in this great country, in this great state, and in this great city of Pleasant Grove. We're grateful, Father, for the liberties that are abound and that we are blessed with. We ask thee to continue with those blessings, that we may be recipients of liberty and freedom and the ability of, in our pursuit of happiness. Bless the citizens of this great city, bless us in this council meeting, that we will be guided and civil, and that we will be reminded of the liberties that we have and the wonderful city that we live in and make decisions accordingly, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, Steve. And Todd will now ask for approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Do we have any?
No changes, Mayor.
No changes?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on. We'll now move to our open session and invite anybody to come forward and address the council and mayor at this time. We've got you three minutes.
Thanks. Denise Trickler. I am here representing the Historic Preservation Commission. Just letting you know that on Wednesday, June 18th, during Strawberry Days, we are going to be doing our first walking tour of the summer, and we're going to be meeting at the DIP in front of the REC Center and doing the locust tour again, and hopefully going into a couple of houses there. So I'd like to invite you all and the staff. It'll be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Denise.
Sounds good. Anyone else like can address the council?
As a lifetime Pleasant Grove resident, I just say thanks to everyone for their service and keeping me here in this place. So amazing. Follow the flag now. We're a decade deep and grateful to the city and everyone who has allowed us to continue to fly that flag and reach far beyond our community. We have my beautiful wife here, Carrie, who's from Emery County, which is turning to be maybe my second favorite place, but she is going to share a little bit of what we are pitching to do for one of our great Pleasant Grove residents.
Okay. Scott, just let me know we're doing this backwards. We should have pitched it to him and then to you. But Mark Besant, longtime resident, he's for almost a century, I guess, put down roots in Pleasant Grove. The Besant Orchards used to blanket so much of Pleasant Grove. And it was probably two or three months ago, Kyle and I were spending the evening at our monthly Sons of the Utah Pioneers dinner, and his family presented. And I didn't know Mark, other than the man who would greet us at the door for the dinner. And I was blown away at the legacy that this man is leaving behind as his health is declining now. And during this meeting, his son had said that he's always wanted to rename the street where their family home still sits. And there's like some of the last fruit trees that were his family sit right there. And I think it's just a teeny, I don't even know if it can be considered a real street, but it is. And so, in the future, when it comes across your plate to vote, maybe a yes or a no for renaming the street. I think the one his son has chosen is Mark Besant Avenue. We think it would be very, very fitting. And we all know that sometimes these small little acts, they just have such a huge impact. And the stuff that he was able to do for youth in the schools and just, he leaves an incredible legacy. So, thank you for your time.
Let me add one quick thing that, so for the first few years of Follow the Flag, trying to figure it all out, it was all about the men and women in uniform, which is very important. But she opened my eyes up to, you don't have to necessarily wear the uniform to serve. And so, Mark's definitely going to be one of our recipients, our honoree this year, along with the men and women who have sacrificed everything. So, we want to push the idea of, you know, serving however you can serve, lifting where you stand. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And Scott will work with you. And there's a process we follow and-
We'll jump through all the hoops. We'll go through that.
Well, if I can take a second to let the council know what the process is. So, we do actually have a policy on how to handle requests like this. We've had these requests in the past. According to what our code is, is they send in a proposal. There's criteria that needs to be met in order to be considered, to have a street name change. So, I've sent that to the Foxes, and I'll resend it if I need to, which says, here's some of the criteria that needs to be made. They will make a, they'll write their proposal saying, here's how we think that Mark Besant's met this criteria. And then we will present it as staff to the city council for your vote, whether you want to change the name of the street or not. So, they don't have to petition me. They don't need my permission. This is your, this is you. I'm just trying to help them through the process so that once we get the proposal, and then, and then they can come and share, similar to what they've shared today on their reasonings. But we want it in writing, and so that's what we'll have for you, hopefully for June 24th.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like come forward? I see no one coming forward. So we'll now close our open session and move on to item number six this evening, our consent items, which are A through, yeah, A through K. And which, we're in your packets there. And a lot of these are all just, all the construction we've got going on, which is a real honor for me to sign these after you guys approve them to get these contractors paid. So, ask for a motion on our consent items.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as listed on our agenda.
We have a motion from Councilmember Jensen. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move over to our board commission and committee appointments, and we have some this evening from our, and so we will go to 7A for our appointees to our arts commission members. And we have the chair, if you'd come forward, and those who are here. It's Brian Fogelberg.
Sorry, the kids wanted to come up as well.
They should.
Be brought into the arts commission. I'll make them work this summer anyway. Thank you for seeing us and getting our board members here today. Yeah. So, I'm Brian Fogelberg, Chair of the Pleasant Grove Arts Commission. I've loved being on that commission and getting to serve the people of Pleasant Grove. And I'm excited that we finally feel like we've got a full commission. We are grateful to have Emmy Coggins here today. Emmy is an accomplished photographer and just very diehard fan of Pleasant Grove. We're also hoping to add Kirk and Laura Baxter. They've got deep connections to the theater, been actors at PG Players, as well as connections with the new Ruth over at Doterra. And then Jace Harmer, who kind of rounds us out pretty nicely. He's got design talent, music talent, all sorts of great talent that he's bringing to the commission as well. So, Emmy, I want to give you a couple of minutes to just introduce yourself and talk about why you want to be here.
I just wanted to say hello. I'm Emmy Coggins. I have been a citizen of Pleasant Grove for coming up on 21 years here in the next couple of months. I actually grew up in Highland and went to Lone Peak and American Fork. But I am now a complete Viking. I have way more blue in my closet than I do red or maroon. My daughter just graduated from Pleasant Grove High School. And my son, he'll be attending Oak Canyon. But we love being here. We love this area. And we talked about when we get older, if we move away, we want to move the whole city. Yeah. So, and to be on the arts commission, I have a deep love for the arts. My kids are involved in theater. I did theater growing up. I think it really strengthens a community. And so, I'm really excited to be a part of the commission.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, with that, council, you guys may be seated and we'll ask for a motion to approve the appointments of Kirk Baxter, Laura Baxter, Emmy Coggins, and Jace Harmer.
Mayor, I'll make a, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments of Kirk and Laura Baxter, Emmy Coggins, and Jace Harmer as arts commission members.
And we have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lamone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, it's all official now. Now, it's also, it was interesting talking to Jace this, last week when, and he was, if you remember, he was there at Memorial Day with his son that sang there. So, anyway, I just, we haven't seen you before. So, anyway, so, he's going to be a real asset to the, they're all, all four of them are. So, thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll go move into 9A, our public hearings for this evening, public hearing to consider the Pleasant Grove City final budget for fiscal year 2025-26. And the presenter is our Director Roy.
It's also out on the website.
And in the packet, yeah.
So, I'm just going to let you know, just a few pages that were changed as we've been working through the budget from when we adopted the tentative budget. So, our last meeting, a decision was made to provide the REC Center with $40,000 for some audio improvements. And so, I changed the document to reflect that change. No other changes. So, that's page three and four, which are just summaries of the entire budget. Page 11, it changes the transfer from the general fund out to the capital projects. And page 23 and 24, which is the capital project budget, and the supplementary is page 24. So, those are the things that were changed. So.
Okay. Any questions, council? Okay. Thanks, Denise.
I think I'm just ignorant on this, Denise, but I think that, did we receive, have we received any additional sales tax information numbers since the last time we talked about the budget?
Um, what's today?
We haven't.
We haven't. Yeah.
No, you guys asked for that and I forgot.
Yeah.
So, we'll need to get that information.
But I can do that. We would have received, we haven't received it yet because of the Memorial Day. So, I'll probably see it in the next couple of days. So, I can, we can do that. So.
Remind me, Steve, specifically what you wanted.
Yeah.
I think we just wanted updated projection, like the, to see where the compares to the projections that we had with regard to sales.
On sales tax.
Sales tax.
Are you talking about our current budget?
Yeah.
Or you're talking about our projections for next year?
I just want to see what track we're on.
Okay. I can, I'll get that.
Sorry, Steve, you asked for that and we didn't get it.
Yeah, just month over month or year over year.
Yeah.
Where we're tracking.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then the final thing was, I noticed that we still have the full amount for the REC Center roof. And we talked about opening a claim with our insurance. I think it was open.
We'll have, yeah, let's have Tina, because we have information on that.
We did file a claim with our insurance company for the roof, and they have made an initial determination. I think the bid was over $100,000. And they gave us an award of $57,000, don't quote me on the exact number, but we have the opportunity to request the depreciation of over $70,000. After the road, roof is fixed, we can send in our receipts. And the only, the requirement was that we notify them that we would be seeking that reimbursement for the depreciation within a certain amount of time, and that has been done. Wendy sent a letter to the trust and they acknowledged receipt of the letter. So, we won't know if we're going to give that 70,000 until after the repairs are made and the receipts are submitted to the insurance company.
I mean, our, our amount that we've earmarked is like 198,000, and they came back with 57? Is there a way that we can like enter into an arbitration or something like that related to the value that they are assigning to the replacement or the damage?
They, I'm not sure. I don't know the number that's in the budget.
Yeah.
But the number that they had was based on an estimate that we gave them.
Oh.
So, they didn't just pull a number out of the hat. The 57 that they gave us plus the 70, whatever we can apply for, equaled the bid amount that we submitted to them.
So, we had 198, so, but you're, but from the number that we have in an actual bid, once it came out, is closer to 130-ish, it seems like?
Yeah. That's my recollection.
So, we'll need budget authority to pay, because we're going to have to pay for the project, and then they'll reimburse us. And so, then I, we can, once those, then those dollars that they reimburse us will go back into the fund. And then those other dollars will be just available. They won't be, you know, used. And so, they could just be put into a contingency count as we're in between that, trying to get that repaired.
Okay.
So, that's-
Then, once it's all done, we'll know, kind of settle it up and know where we're at.
Correct. Yeah. Yep.
Our intention is, we think we're going to get full reimbursement.
Yeah.
So, but we have to front the money, at least part of it. And then, the budget authority is more than that. Whatever doesn't get spent, just rolls back into the general fund, or the capital fund, fund balance. So, it just goes back into the reserve account to be used another time.
Updates as that happens will be, will be helpful. But that sounds like we're on the right track. So, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Well, thank you, Denise. We'll now open our public hearing and invite anybody to come forward and address the council at this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now close our public hearing and bring it back up here.
Mayor, there's no action.
There's no action on this?
It will be on June 24th.
Okay. So, there's no action on that. So, we don't need a motion. So, we'll now move on to 9B, a public hearing to consider resolution 2025-021, adjusting and amending the actual and anticipated expenditures for the fiscal years 2024, 2025, and providing for an effective date. Back to Director Roy.
So, this is just changing our current budget. Just a couple of items. I've asked for $150,000. And a couple of items that come up, and I need to do this before June 30th, because I can't change the budget after the close of the fiscal year. And that's actually state compliance. So, a couple of things that we've had, with the two retirements in Pleasant, I mean, in the police department, that's a big draw on the department's budget. We do follow GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles, which on business-type activities, which is our utility funds, we accrue, we accrue this expense. But in the general fund, anything that's considered a governmental activity, we don't accrue for. And so, this is just an expense that we have with people leaving. They get sick leave, any unpaid vacation and things. So, that's the majority of that there. And then, lots of times, we have operational expenses, and I'm aware of a couple. I usually talk to the directors. And the fire department's had a couple of big expenses. We had to put brand-new tires on one of our rigs. That's pretty expensive. And we've had some mechanical things on the fire trucks. So, just having some budget authority in case we have a few more things come up in the next couple of weeks. If we don't need it, then I don't use it, and it stays just in fund balance. So, if I don't need any of those dollars, as we're finalizing the budget and the audit, then it just stays in the, on fund balance. I don't use it, the budget authority. So.
Any questions, council?
Yes, I have one question. On the retirement, is that a one-time or is that ongoing?
That's, that's just a one-time, like when these people leave, they'll get a percentage of their sick leave and their vacation buyout. And then they're, you know, so that's just, it's just an expense that we're, now, if it was someone in the, in our water department-
It would come out of the utility.
Then, it would come out of the liability account, because I accrue in those funds. But in the governmental, we don't. So, just, and we may not need it, but it's good to avoid a state management comment. So.
Got it.
Hey, just a question. So, we're moving, or appropriating 150,000 of general fund for personal and operating expenses. What is the paper trail or what is the audit trail? I mean, just, I mean-
So, in our, our system, our financial system, if I need those dollars, then I have, there's a budget module. And I go in there, and that's where I have to make that change. And as part of the audit and state compliance, I have to show adopted budget and then an amended budget. As I report, both on the audit report, you'd see that. And then you'll also see it in our budget documents.
Has this, has this happened every year?
Oh, yeah. We come, we come back numerous times. At least one time, we may come back for other things during the year. We just haven't needed to. So, yeah.
Are you talking about specifically to the payment for the-
The 150. So, do we, do we always just kind of allocate 150 for the-
It's close. I go in and look. Sometimes we've only done 100. You know, with these being fairly recent, I was in looking at budget and stuff. But we've always came back. I'll go through every department's budget and to see if I need to do a budget amendment in any of those. Just necessitated it for the general fund.
If I can tackle this a different way. So, when we set our budget at the beginning of the year, and maybe more specific to when we have an employee leave and we have to pay out their vacation and they're sick, we don't budget that at the beginning of the year, because we don't know who's retiring, who's leaving, and what that payout's going to be. So, if we get into a circumstance like that, then we just come back when we know what that number is and ask for that allocation. Whenever Denise reviews the budget, if there's any line items, if we have any problems where we might be up against where we're spending, then we would like to come to you and say, can we do this budget amendment? Because if we don't, and that item gets spent over what we have budgeted, we get a comment on our audit. So, we're trying to stay ahead of that. And so, we, we do these every year in June. We, she, she looks at all the line items, and we only have a couple out of, how many line items? Hundreds of line items, where we just have issues, because the fire department's another good one. That's coming out of a line item for those repairs, and we just had more repairs than what we've normally had. The revenue is coming from, where did you, was it an increase in sales?
It's just coming out of fund balance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It just, when you do these-
It's coming out of our reserve account.
You're just, they're just coming out of the reserve account. And like I said, I won't do those until we finalize with the audit. If I don't need those dollars in any of those divisions, then it just stays, and I just don't do the budget amendment.
To me, the process seems to make sense, but what I have in front of me is just the resolution. I don't know if I'm missing something in the packet.
You don't have the numbers?
I have the 150 as part of the resolution, but I don't have any kind of indication of, of what you've told us here today, like, hey, here's this, and here's where I think we might want a little extra cushion. All of that makes total sense to me.
You don't have that in front of you.
I just wish I had a sheet so I could say, okay, this is why we're asking for 150. All I have is the resolution that says we need 150, and I appreciate the explanation here. But again, I think, especially for a public hearing, it would be nice to have the underlying reasons for that.
Well, the one, the seven, the half of that 150 for the 75, I think I will need that for those two buyouts. And so, that's a line item in the police department. It'd just be a full-time, regular line item in personnel budget. I, I did a calculation based on accrual hours that they had at the time. And that, those dollars are almost I'm going to need just for those two buyouts.
So, Denise, I think what I'm hearing Steve say is, instead of just having a lump sum, he'd like to see the breakdown of, okay, how much of this and what line item is it going to?
Well, just another whereas statement that says, right?
Yeah, I just, it's for me, and I think for the public, it would be helpful to say, okay, because I 100% trust that you are correct in that, because you've been correct for a long time. But for me, evaluating it and saying, hey, okay, this makes sense. And for the public to know, oh, this is why there's 150 coming from general, because it's going to be allocated. And here's what we know. Here's what we anticipate, but don't quite, aren't 100% on yet. And, and just a table, just a table that's attached as an exhibit or something.
I think I understand what you're saying. I mean, Denise-
I can do that. Yeah.
I mean, you and I can talk about that for future budget amendments. So, it's, it's, yeah, it's a fair point.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Denise? No. Thank you, council. Thanks, Denise. We'll now open our public hearing for our resolution 2025-021. Invite anybody to come forward and address the council at this time. I see no one coming forward, so we'll now call our count, our open hearing and bring it back to, close our open hearing and bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion on resolution 2025-021. Do I have a motion, council? Mayor, I'll make a motion for approved resolution 2025-21, adjusting and amending actual anticipated expenditures of fiscal year 2024, 2025, and providing for an effective date. We have a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Williams. And we'll start out on roll call vote with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen. Yes. Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. That concludes all of our public hearings for this evening. We'll then move right into 10A, our action item ready for vote this evening. 10A is to consider for adoption resolution 25, 2025-022 of the governing board of Pleasant Grove City authorizing the mayor to sign. The Tempanogas Library Consortium memorandum and of understanding between American Fork, Highland, and Pleasant Grove City and providing for effective date. And we'll turn the time back over to our director.
Mayor and council, we discussed this in the work session. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just maybe give us a sentence, paragraph. What are we doing?
Okay.
Just a, just a short little, this is what we're doing.
Okay. The Tempanogas Library Consortium is a group of three libraries, Pleasant Grove, Highland, and American Fork, that have made an agreement or a memorandum of understanding to join the collections of the three so that all three libraries' patrons can, can have easy access to them and have courier services deliver them to the individual libraries.
Love it. Perfect. Perfect. Well stated.
So-
Thank you.
So, my question is, so if I want to go over and hang out in American Fork's library-
Yes.
On the second floor, I can do that?
Sure.
Because just show them my library card at Pleasant Grove?
Well, you can check out, you can check out a book at American Fork.
Technically, you could have done that before. We've had an agreement for many years to be able to do that.
But we can take our Pleasant Grove library card and check something out at Pleasant Grove. Sorry, at, at American Fork.
You can be in the comfort of your home and not find, and get on through the, the library catalog, our library catalog, see the book you want that is technically owned by American Fork, click, place a hold, put in your library card number, and it will be delivered to the Pleasant Grove Library in a couple of days.
So, is the consortium agreement specifically for checking out books? What about like programs and things like that?
We are still- We are still individual that way.
Okay, gotcha.
But we, we don't track library cards, so if you're an American Fork resident and like ours better, you can come to ours.
Okay.
Can you just, the libraries take turns. Who is the, the driver?
The courier.
The courier?
Yes. Right now, we have been doing one day a week each, so doing the deliveries three days a week. But they've been so successful, we can't fit them in the vehicle because we've been using this, our city vehicle and we've been filling the whole backseat and the trunk and we can't fit them. So.
But that's a good problem to have.
It's a great problem to have. So starting next week, actually, we're going to go to two days each. So we'll be doing them Monday through Saturday.
Okay.
It's almost like, it's almost, it's almost like we need a, we need a bookmobile.
Yeah.
We do not need a bookmobile.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Maybe somebody else has still got another question for the director here.
All right.
Anybody else got anything? No. Thank you, Sherri.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a, a motion to adopt Resolution 20, 2025 dash 022 of the governing body of Pleasant Grove authorizing the mayor to sign a Tempanogus Library Consortium memorandum of understanding between American Fork, Highland, Pleasant Grove and providing for an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Williams, a second from Councilmember Jensen, and we'll start out with Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamone.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. That finishes all of our public hearings for, no, we've already done that. This was our action items. We'll now move to 10B to permit to exceed noise restrictions for the bar S constructions for the purpose of constructing a water line on 800 North, which it's not. It's 1800 North. And for the time period not to exceed two days between the dates of January, June the 10th and 2025 and July 31st, 2025. Turn the time back over to our director, Winterton.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Noise ordinance to allow the contractor perform some necessary and critical water line work in 1800 North as to avoid a detour and a lane shut out on North County Boulevard that would affect the large collector that is North County Boulevard and particularly the, the hospital.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Any questions for him?
No.
With that, I ask for a motion.
I make the motion that we approve the, no, exit, permit to exceed noise restrictions for bar S construction for the purpose of constructing a water line across 800 North for a time period not to exceed two days between the dates of June 10th and July 31st, 2025. 1800. 1800, I'm sorry. 1800. I, okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember.
Second.
Lamone, a second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now go to 10C, No Award Bar S Construction Company LLC for the 2800 North drainage project. And we'll turn back, back over to our director.
Thank you. We solicited for and received bids for a small storm drain project to connect some storm drain up to 2800 North and go along 900 West. Low bid is Bar S Construction. The bid tab that is dated and time stamped 5:29 a.m. is in your packet that Britton Tibetan put together. So that's when he does his best work. Do I have any questions that I can answer?
No. No, thank you. So I ask for a motion, counsel.
Mayor.
I'll make a motion to award Bar S Construction Company LLC for the 2800 North drainage project.
A motion by Councilmember Williams, the second.
Yes, second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now move to 10D to consider for a request of St. John's Properties for a four lot.
St. John's. St. John's Properties.
Oh, St. John's. Oh, excuse me.
Do we get the golf in?
Yeah, it says.
Just, just about as good.
Just about as good. So anyway, I'm sorry. Consider for a request, St. John's Property for a four lot preliminary commercial subdivision called Valley Grove Business Park, Platte R, 5.185 acres located approximately 1135 South Valley Grove Way in the Grove Interchange Sub District. Presenter is Director Cardenas.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's for a plat, okay? If you're okay, Mayor, I'll present D, E, F, and G. So they're all from the same side. Did I skip a letter?
Nope.
Nope.
So I'll, I'll present all of them because it's one plat and three different side plans. So it's important that we make four different motions for each one of the items that are right there. But if you guys are okay, I'll present all together. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So let's fly to the Grove and let's go to the Grove Interchange Sub District. This is this area right here of Pleasant Grove, close by the freeway. Aaron R BBQ is right here. And this building that we can see is being built right there, that's through Home Two Suites. It's the second hotel in our city. Okay? So the area that the applicant is proposed to subdivide is this area that I drew right there in red. We're talking about a little bit above five acres. It's 5.18 acres. That one is proposed to be subdivided into two, sorry, into four, not two, four different lots. It's going to be the Valley Grove Business Park, Platte R. Every lot will be above one acre. I'll show you the plat. This is the plat, okay? I'm going to go back and forth. This roundabout that we can see right here, or the portion of the roundabout, is what we're going to see on the drawing right here. Okay? So again, the hotel is kind of like right here are the towers are on this area right here. North County Boulevard runs on this area that I'm signaling with my, with my mouse. Okay? So again, it's four lots in this area right here. That's the plat. Four commercial, or we can call them four retail lots. Okay? We've got Lot 38, Lot 39, Lot 40, and Lot 41. Now, that's the plat. That's the subdivision of land. That's the new property lines that we have. If we take a look at the, how St. John's develops, we can see that each building is in its own lot. This is a property line. There's another, another property land right here and its own building and so on. So that's customary how they do things. So again, they do, they're going to do four different buildings, but right now they're proposing only three. I'm going to go back to the subdivision. So again, they're going to build on Lot 41, on Lot 40, and Lot 39. Lot 38, that one's left out. Okay? That's for a, for a, for a future restaurant. That's, and the applicant is here. He can tell us a little bit more about that, but that lot is being left out. What they're presenting, what we're presenting today again is Lot 39, Lot 40, and Lot 41. This is the site plan and this is the buildings. Okay? We're going to call the buildings retail P, Q, and R. These two lots right here, okay, what it will be Lot 40 and Lot 39, okay, we have two identical buildings. I can see there's going to be a restaurant because just by looking at the site plan and we can look at it right now, we can see a drive-through on both of them. Okay? Very typical of what we can see in the area. So we're going to have two restaurants, multi-tenant, I'm assuming as well. And lot, each building, sorry, each building is about 9,500, a little shy of 10,000 square feet. This building right here, this is a larger building that will be located on Lot 41. This building is about, is double the size of, of those. So it's about 18,000, almost 19,000 square feet. Okay? As you guys can see, each lot, okay, each lot has its own parking within its lot. However, if we add up all the parking needed for those three buildings, we find ourselves that we're nine, nine stalls short. But we can do a, or the applicant's proposing to do a shared parking agreement. They have plenty of parking on the other side. So these ones that you can see right here in this dotted line, this, this parking can be used for this, those side plans right there. That's totally legal. We can do that. When, when two lots are next to each other and one is lacking and the other one has more than enough, then we can share and we do, we do that through a shared parking agreement, which is the case on this. It's convenient that they, is the same owner on both sides of the property land. Okay? So we work on that. A total of 188 parking stalls. I count every single one of them, 188 parking stalls. If we take a look, this is what the, the landscape and how it's going to look. Again, we have the larger building, the two multi-tenant buildings with their drive-through. They're all surrounded by landscape. They meet all the requirements of the, of the, of the code that is inside the Grove Interchange Sub District zone. So they meet the open space, they meet the requirement space, the parking, and the buildings are going to be like that. That's a, that's an image of, it's pretty similar to what we have in the area. Okay? The applicant is here right behind me. This item was presented to the, to the planning commission, first to the design review board, so they can take a look at the materials, they can, they, they get to take a look at the colors, they get to take a look at the orientation of the landscape, they forward recommendation of approval. Then you went to planning commission and they also forward recommendation of approval for the four different items. The plat that has four lots and three buildings, three retail buildings in three out of those four lots. Those are the four items that we have for today, Mayor.
So it's still a four lot?
Four lots, but one of them is, is not going to be occupied at this point. So the plat is four lots. Three of those lots are going to be occupied. That's why we have four items. The, the subdivision and three, the subdivision and three retail buildings. That makes the four items. Okay?
Okay.
That's what I have, Mayor and counsel.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Daniel?
Maybe not for Daniel, maybe for Marty.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to, I'll get to Marty here. We, we don't, we don't hear enough, you know? Nowadays, we hear so much from Neil, we, we miss Marty, you know? So anyway.
Daniel, there were no, there were no nay votes on, from the planning commission, correct?
Pardon?
The vote from the planning commission?
Sorry, yes. So we did, we did the, we did the planning commission and my planning commission make one motion for all of the items. So we have to re notice it. We just did it last night. That's the reason why. And it was a unanimous recommendation of approval for the four items. It just happened last night. We have to redo the, the planning commission because since it's four items, that's why I make emphasis on that. We need to make a motion for every single one of the items. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel.
My pleasure.
Marty.
Wait, why is Marty limping?
I just had a little surgery on the foot for.
Okay.
Correcting some plant fasciitis. Hopefully, we'll see how it goes. You know, I was thinking earlier, like.
What did Neil say?
Soon as Neil stood up and everybody was just doing the exact same thing they did for me sir for seven years. Boy, you got three minutes on the clock. You can't say much about this. So it was, it went the same with me and Neil, so don't feel bad. No, excited to be here, to, to have a few more buildings to build. We've got two that are finishing up on the Boulevard. Hopefully, you've seen the paving down. Buildings are supposed to be finished by the middle of July and start some of our tenant build-outs. These buildings are kind of next on our list that we want to get going. One of the buildings, as Daniel mentioned, was twice as large as the other two buildings together. It's a little bit different offering of some different tenant occupancy that can be allowed. It's a little bit different floor plate, a little bit deeper, a little bit larger. And so Daniel, as we started contemplating what we could do a little bit further back off of some of the roads, wanted to have an offering of, of some different tenant occupancies that aren't our typical floor plate for retail. Still anticipated to be a retail building, maybe some larger type retails. Got some patios on the ends. We've got a delivery location as well for some different, maybe some clothing or other types of tenants that would be interested in that space. So I'm excited to get these going. We want to hopefully get started here next month and have them built and ready to occupy by the beginning of the year. So.
Mayor. Okay. Sounds great. Any other questions for Marty?
Yeah. Marty, it's exciting because I think it's been, well, probably more than a year and a half that we voted and approved this, you know, this, this property that you bought. And it's exciting, exciting to see the developments, the retail going in and, and I, people are excited for our community to have this. So, yeah.
Yeah. We're excited to keep it moving. There's, there's a lot of interest and I think things are going really well. On the leasing side, again, that's all kind of private until it's disclosed. But they, they do have a lot of interest in this area and that's why you can see that we're building, you know, we haven't even finished two buildings and we're already pretty positive and optimistic about starting three more buildings. And so it's, it's very positive and we're, we're moving forward.
I think it was like over a $600 million type of investment, right?
Yeah. It's keep it all moving. So.
Awesome. Well, well done.
Councilman Rogers, do you want to make a comment?
Oh, I was just wondering who they had lined up, but.
They're not going to tell us.
We can't get it out of them.
Yeah.
We'll have to take them in the back room.
Industry, industry?
There's a steakhouse that we, that we are currently working on. I think they've come to DRC and it is public information at that point with that, with Longhorn.
Yeah.
And so that's that, that empty lot, hopefully you'll see a site plan on that fairly soon. I know that I've been coordinating with them and their groups and engineers.
So that's the, that's the one you have.
That's the fourth.
That's the fourth building on that plat that you're seeing. That is a potential. It's not 100% int, but.
And that's the one right out on North County.
It is very, very close. So, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Right on North County Boulevard, right in the corner. Great location and lots of, lots of movement going on. So.
Every one, every one of those is just a little more of a draw for others. So it's, you just got to get them hooked on the, on the area. So good work.
The really cool thing is that I'm on the fourth floor of the building that's right across the way. So I can literally from my office look down at all of this happening and it, it is so fun.
Yeah.
Thanks, Marty.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. With that, I ask for a motion for the St. John's Property four lot preliminary commercial subdivision plat.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve. So we're doing D first, that we're approving the four lot preliminary commercial subdivision plat called Valley Grove Business Park, Platte R, as previously read.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now move on to 10E. Consider for a request for St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for a retail building, P, located at approximately six, 1165 South Valley Grove Drive in the Grove Interchange Sub District. And back to Director Cardenas, but, or, no.
I already presented, Mayor. Building P is, Building P is this one right here. So if you guys are ready, we can make the motion.
Okay.
So Mayor, I'll make a motion on, on this one. I'll make a motion to, to approve the commercial site plan for retail building P, located approximately 1165 South Valley Grove Way in the, in the Grove Zone Interchange Sub District.
Here we have a motion by Councilmember Williams. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rogers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move to 10F. Consider for request by St. George Properties Commercial Site Plan for Retail Building Q, located approximately 1077 South Mountain View Lane in the Grove Interchange Sub District. And back to you.
Yeah, Mayor, is there also, I already presented, Building Q is this one, this building right here.
Okay. So I ask for a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for the request of, approve the request of St. John's Properties for the commercial site plan for, for a retail building, Building Q, located at approximately 1077 South Mountain View Lane in the Grove Interchange Sub District.
A motion by Councilmember Jensen, a second by Councilmember Williams. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our final one is 10G. Consider for request by St. George Properties for a commercial site plan for retail building.
St. John's.
So, okay. Oh, yes. St. John's Property.
I think you want to go down to St. George.
I do. I want to be in St. George. I missed my tea time here this afternoon. And for retail building R, located approximately 1035 South Mountain View Lane in the Grove Interchange Sub District.
And Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the St. John's, St. John's Properties for a commercial site plan for the build, retail building, Building R, as previously read.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Anderson, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Daniel. That concludes all of our action items ready for vote this evening and we'll, and we've already taken care of all of our stuff in our work session. And do we have anything else from our city administrator before you leave?
No, we didn't finish your report.
Okay. 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 Well, just reports. Councilmember Lamone, do you have anything? Anderson?
Nope.
Really quick, we, well, maybe it's too early to announce it, but the, the main concert on Main Street, that'll be being pushed out soon, the 14th. Concert starts at 7:30. So Todd will be singing.
That's a, that's a no. No, I, it's, this is, this is the greatest month of the, of the year. So looking forward to it.
Councilmember Rogers?
I don't know if this was already mentioned because I missed the first.